To have a clear understanding of what is taking place within our school systems and then learning how that will be better in the event that we aren't meeting those goals.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's not because we, no offense, care about coddling the superintendent. It's because we want to have those real, real conversations and, and have those continuous improvement type conversations. And when we're doing that, we're, we're, it is a conversation, it's not a deposition. The other piece of that is, how, how is it that you would want teachers to address students? Would, would we want our, would we want our teachers to be belittling our students? Or speaking in an accusatory manner? Or?
No.
Right, right. Yeah, so when we, if, if a board belittles the superintendent, that signals the superintendent that it's okay to belittle senior staff, which it signals that it's okay to belittle building leadership, which signals it's okay to belittle teachers, and then right on down to students. So this creates that culture of continuous improvement. It's essentially that board superintendent level PLC and, and what happens in the boardroom is echoed in the classroom. And so when we have that conversation and can be reflective, and the superintendent can be reflective, then that signals all the way down the organization, all the way down to students, that we have a growth mentality and we can be reflective in our practice. Let's take a moment to review that next section, how is goal monitoring beneficial?
Can you repeat the question Cindy?
Just giving you a moment to read that section, how is goal monitoring beneficial?
Thank you.
And then, then, once anybody is ready, just tell me what is jumping out to you. And Teri, please feel free to jump in at any point.
I would say, I mean, every audible, it's honestly sticked out to me, but the whole leading by example, which I think you just referenced previously, that we set the stage at this table for what we want to see within the district. And so our behavior matters. So that's one of the things, and that we stay grounded in student outcomes.
Yeah. Leading by example, staying grounded in student outcomes. Who else? Who haven't I heard from?
I think I wanted to certainly add to the lead by example. It, it speaks to the spirit of collaboration with which the board superintendent relationship should be, in which it should be grounded. You know, in a set of leaders as signal senders, and whatever signal is being sent through our, you know, disposition, our professional comportment, and our action, has that trickle down effect. It trickles down to cabinet members, it trickles down to school leaders, to teachers, and ultimately to students. And so we essentially, sort of, we are at the anchors of the trickle down effect, because ultimately, whatever decisions we make, how we prioritize, how we strategize, will ultimately impact those who we are here to serve, and that's our students.
Yeah, I like that, we're the anchors. What about the piece on superintendent evaluation? That it's a micro-assessment of superintendent performance, creating an opportunity for the superintendent to make adjustments. Why does this matter? Why is superintendent performance synonymous with system performance? Anybody?
Repeat the question, please.
The, the piece about superintendent evaluation, it says, "With each monitoring report, the board is conducting a micro-assessment of superintendent performance, which creates an opportunity for the superintendent to make adjustments. As a continuous improvement strategy, providing this regularly recurring feedback loop is a superior approach to the outdated concept of merely conducting annual performance evaluations." Why does it matter?
It's a thing of the spirit.
Yeah.
Because it's exactly impossible because of the frequency.
Mm-hmm.
The superintendent, not only around a goal, they have to be prepared to and responding to goals and becoming a force of action that needs to move forward. So it feels a bit more regular, not in terms of feedback, but it also creates the opportunity for us to always be sort of in that continuous improvement mode, where there's a line of communication where they're open, and we have the opportunity to sort of that responsibility relative to having the superintendent performance, but also kind of more interactive, provides feedback to the superintendent around the goal.
Yeah. Yeah, when we think about this regularly recurring feedback loop, when you look at it, the majority of the time throughout your goal monitoring, you're actually looking at interim goals. And what our interim goals do is signal whether or not the implementation of strategy is working or not. And so when we talk about that, it, then it signals the superintendent to look at that piece about what, what in deployment or implementation of strategy isn't working. Gives them time to, to tweak that. For example, I think we've heard that happen in a number of monitoring reports, if, if something isn't quite on track, then we hear the superintendent, we've heard Matt talk about, you know, we need more, you know, for instructional coaching, we need more time on task, we need more resources. It's not that the strategy needs to change. However, there's something within the deployment or the implementation of the strategy that isn't working, and this gives the superintendent the opportunity to look into that, to be monitoring other indicators, and, and coming back to the board with their rationale and their next steps to, to make those changes necessary. And then when we get to that overall goal monitoring, when you're looking at that summative assessment, and it's not on target, then that might be the signal to the superintendent that we maybe actually need to look at our strategies too. It might not just be about implementation of strategy, it might be the, the strategy altogether, or a strategy, or a piece of that. Both of those things, though, really are that under the hood type of work that the superintendent and his team are doing, but through the monitoring conversation, and through that frequency of monitoring, then that's brought, that's brought forward, and it inspires the superintendent to continuously be doing that investigation. And, and when we're talking about it, that's, and when the board is spending its time talking about it, that's where that inspiration, that's what, what helps the superintendent also stay focused.
Cindy, I have a question on this part.
Yeah.
Because it's, reading it, it talks about if the data says things are slightly off track, the strategy would reflect that. If the data says the performance is completely off track, the superintendent's strategy should reflect the urgency. I think it, sometimes it's challenging to know if we're slightly off track or completely off track. And so I am interested in your feedback on how we should be expecting to see, how do you define urgency, right? I mean, like, to me, anything off track's an urgency, right? But how, how does that, how does that come into actualization, and how we should be expecting to know if there's these urgent changes occurring, or if they're slight?
Yeah, and I, I think that that comes through the conversation about what do we know about this, and, and what have you learned, and, and the understanding of what is contributing to whatever the off-track is, I think, in the, in the actual conversation. And, and Matt, maybe you can speak to how you have brought that forward in the past. The other thing that, and I'll let you do that, and then we can talk about another potential way of, of talking about that as well, but it would require a change.
Yeah, well, I think it's a, defining that is going to be important for us moving forward. I think to this point, our, our metrics have been slightly off, you know, by a few percentage points, but you're correct in the definition of that. At what point does three percentage points become the definition of slightly off track, versus now we've hit four percentage points of being off? Now that feels like that's a much deeper sense of urgency. I don't know how to quite quantify that just yet. I think working with Dr. Roberts and the team to help sort of come to a definitive understanding of what is considered to be slightly versus significantly off track, I think that's a warranted conversation for us over the summer months.
And I think as a, a potential process improvement that I can bring as part of that conversation for you to consider, would be actually creating some sort of, and it would take some, some doing around, you know, however, around the data and how it's sliced and diced to figure out what those breaking points are, but what could happen is that there might actually be a legend, you know, that, that if it's red, it's really off track, if it's orange, it's not where, or it's slightly off track. Some sort of, of legend that would tell more of where they believe and interpret that to be.
Yeah, I think that common language could be really helpful. I think sometimes it's frustrating to, to, you know, when we all don't know what to expect as far as what's a success or not. I mean, it feels like you hit it or you don't, and so when you don't, then you would think there's like an urgent response, but maybe, maybe, you know, it doesn't warrant that, and I just need to know that. So I think maybe helping to create a common language so we can feel like the superintendent has the ball, and we all know which way we're moving, would be really helpful in moving forward.
It does make me wonder, Jenna, to your point, if maybe a starting place is to characterize that slightly versus significantly off track in the actual written narrative, that we deem this to be slightly off track for X, Y, and Z reasons, and therefore our strategy's going to be consistent, but we're going to make small tweaks to it. Perhaps that's a starting place.
And I think that it's also okay to be completely off track, because you're going to do a complete pivot, right? And, and I think that's, it's okay to not be on track because there's going to be a change, and making sure we all know that. It's a safe place to try and try something new.
Yeah, absolutely.
Something I'm wondering, as you bring that up, is it, for me, it's not just about the percentage points, or how far away we are, or the range of how far away we are. It is both the percentage value and, you know, it's that three-dimensional view of it, and, and knowing, is it just, is it just we need more time, we need more PD, we need, you know, or is it? I, I feel that we need to also look at the changes that are being made in addition to the percentage value.
Yeah, and I, and I think we might be able to get a little more into that as we talk, get into the effective monitoring report section. Anything else? Yeah.
I often think that's where we are in the mindset of a goal, and how, if we are in monitoring a certain goal, if we're early in monitoring and we're slightly off track or we're off track, if this is, you know, a culture that you spend time with to get back on track, however, if we are in regular monitoring and the trend is not moving in the right direction, then it feels like the kind of, type of response, there's a very different response as well. Essentially, we're not trending in the right direction, act, we're taking, are not, either effectively taking hold or for whatever reason, are not impacting the numbers. So I think it depends on, for, for you are on a life cycle of your goal monitoring, or you know, early, middle, late, and that's a major as well. And how to take that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a valid point, and probably part of that interpretation piece that we'll, we'll touch more on in a few minutes. Thank you, Teri. Let's move on to the sections under before goal monitoring. It says, "Once marked goals about student outcomes have been adopted, effective goal monitoring requires four main ingredients: monitoring calendar, monitoring report, superintendent participation, and board member participation." Starting with effective monitoring calendars, is there anything that jumps out there before we move on? Anything, anybody has questions on in that section? Any questions or comments on that section, the monitoring calendars? If anything comes up later, we'll, we can come back to it, but let's get into effective monitoring reports, because I think this'll speak some more to that superintendent evaluation piece, and, so I'll give you a few minutes to read effective monitoring reports. And actually, if you can, also pull out tonight's monitoring report, and we can walk through Does everybody have the monitoring report for this evening in front of them as well? Yes. All right. So, there are four qualities of the one to five-page monitoring report, but let's look, is it one to five pages? Yes. It is. Good job. Kudos, team. The goal, does it clearly show which specific goal, interim goal, is being monitored? The data, does it clearly show data for the three previous reporting periods? If there are three previous reporting periods? Yes. And in a line graph, and shows the current reporting period and target reporting periods. Yes. All right. The interpretation, does it clearly show the superintendent's understanding of system performance relative to the goal? Yes. And finally, number four, the evidence and plan, does it clearly show supporting documentation that evidences the superintendent's understanding of system, system performance? If the school system is not at target, or the superintendent's understanding of system performance indicates implementation is not on track, does the monitoring report clearly describe systemic root causes, strategic responses, including rationale, and any needed next steps? Yes. Yeah. Let's talk a little bit more about number three, the superintendent's interpretation. Will someone read that out loud, quick?
Does it clearly show the superintendent's understanding of system performance relative to the goal?
What does that mean? And, and I guess, in asking what it, was it, what it means, note, does it say system performance relative to the interim goal? Does it say system performance relative to the goal? And what does that mean?
Well, the interim measures are just markers identified to help accomplish the overarching goal. And I think, for me, understanding of system performance relative to the goal really shows up, I mean, the data speaks for itself, but it shows up in the what is going well, what's not, and what are we going to do, next steps.
Yeah. Thank you. Is there a chance that an interim goal could be not hitting its target, but the superintendent's evaluation could still say on track? Or conversely, is there a chance that the interim goal could actually be below target, and the superintendent could have an evaluation that says not on track?
Well, I think we just had this conversation last monitoring report, where you said, like, you felt like some of the interims maybe were not correct yet in indicating and predicting a final achievement of the goal, so yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that could be one of the reasons, that they could not, some of the interim goals might not have the predictive value that was originally thought. Why else, why else could that be? Could there be a chance that an interim goal is not met, but the superintendent's evaluation could still say on track? Or that the interim goal is met, and the superintendent's evaluation could say not on track? And anybody's welcome, any of you sitting in the hot seats are welcome to play, yeah.
Potentially different students are being measured in the goal versus the interim goal. So they might be off track in the ninth grade, but the goal is for 11th grade, and two years ago, they could have, the interim goal could have been on track, so that cohort could be different.
Could be because of a different cohort, and, and a difference in who's being measured? What else?
I think your question speaks to the importance of looking at more than just the data, and ensuring that you have a wide view of the, the system and the, the big picture.
Yeah, yeah, so I, and I think it's important that we get really clear on this, because I know there's the grappling that the superintendent and team are going to be doing over what those interim goals might be, and, and what, if, if there should be different interim goals that have a better predictive value. But what we know too, is that the superintendent is going to have a larger view of the system. So if the superintendent, if you see an interim goal that doesn't hit the target, but the superintendent still, still says we're on track for the goal, it could be because there's some anomaly that the superintendent knows about. It could be that, that is going to be back, going to be resolved by the next, next quarter, or by the end of the year, or what have you. But they know that there is something in the system, which is why the, the effective monitoring conversations are so, so important, and having those other touchpoints, and understanding the superintendent's expertise, and really having those open-ended question conversations about that. Just like if the superintendent, if it's looking like the data is hitting, if it's hitting the target for the interim goal, yet the superintendent says, no, we're really not on track for the goal, again, the superintendent might know of something, some reason that the data's going to plateau, that, that there's some other thing happening in the system that, that things are going to level out, and we need to explore that more and maybe change, change path, or, or change deployment of resources, or whatever that implementation wonkiness might be. Does that make sense? Is there anybody that has questions on that? Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
About your point around the superintendent potentially knowing something.
Yes.
That could be, you know, in the future, that could be impacted. Is there a requirement at that moment to disclose or to otherwise share that information as part of, you know, the response to the data? I just, I just want to clarify, you know, how we communicate those X factor things or those unknowns that could reside with the superintendent that we may or may not know.
Yeah, so I, I think that might be, team and superintendent can chime in here, but would probably be in the what's not going well section of the report, and, and probably disclosed right there, but then further questioning and conversation would probably also bring out more detail within the monitoring conversation. Does that, am I portraying that accurately, team? Yeah, I'm getting head nods, yes. Does that, is that responsive, Teri? You bet. Okay, any other questions about that before we move on? Okay. And we're just gonna, we're gonna go really quickly over those next two items, which is, it's around effective superintendent participation and effective board member participation. So if you can, let's look at superintendent participation, and if there's anything that jumps out at you before you move on, before we move on, I would say that it seemingly over the last, definitely over the last year that I've been sitting here as coach, the effective superintendent participation has been present.
I would say the thing that stands out to me that I think is extremely important in this process is to allow that opportunity for vulnerability, and to know that it's okay to be on a, you know, share the data, let's talk about the data. This, again, this is not a gotcha moment, that's not what this is designed for, this is meant to have a conversation, and so we want to be here as thought leaders to help in this process, and be a partner with the superintendent.
Yeah, yeah, so, those, actually, that effective superintendent participation and effective board member participation have to go hand in hand. Superintendent can be forthcoming with the data. Superintendent can be forthcoming with the data, not sugarcoat it. If the board is practicing, not practicing gotcha governance and, and vice versa. It can be a conversation. Of course, there comes a time, if there were to come a time where a harder conversation would have to happen, that would have to happen. But you've had that, that relationship and that, those types of conversation. It won't, it would not be a surprise because of these micro-assessments that you've been doing all, all the way around.
I think the question I have is who, who has the onus on follow-through? So oftentimes, we do this and, and next steps are identified. And I often feel like there's no follow-through. Let me, that came out wrong. There's likely follow-through, meaning the staff is moving forward on things, but it's hard for us to know, you know, if it happened. So I guess I'm just trying to understand how, for holding all of us accountable, right? Steps that were identified that staff have said they're going to do, is the assumption that they've done it coming into the next report? Or is there a through line that we should be seeing? Cause we don't, we don't take minutes. So there's, that's a piece that's really hard for me around accountability and onus and whether or not that's, should be a board responsibility or a staff responsibility.
Yeah, so I think, um, I think that goes to the idea that what the board is focused on and holding the superintendent to, accountable to is results versus activities and, um, and, and that type of thing versus those operational tasks that they've identified. So I think, I think the through line actually comes in the frequency of monitoring reports and less about if the superintendent has checked off the list of next steps, more that the, the needle is moving. I think, I think if the needle isn't moving, then that conversation at the board table might then be around what didn't work of the next steps that you had, you know, you identified these steps last, last time. What was or was not effective among those, those items? Because what, from quarter to quarter, what could happen is that as their, as the implementation tweaks are being made, right there, they might figure out that actually it wasn't that, it was this. And they, what we don't want is for them to have to come back to the board to say, actually, we're, we're not gonna do this, we're going to do this. We want them to be able to act and take care of it in the moment. So less about accountability for checking off items on a list, more accountability toward results. So we, we measure for results, not effort. Does that help?
It does when you're on track. When you're not on track is, I, I think there has to be some back and forth conversation because at the end of the day, our job is to hold and support the superintendent in accomplishing the goals. And so I just, I really struggle with the, if we're not on track, how are we reflecting on what worked or what didn't work? Or how are we stating, we tried this, we didn't try this? Cause you know, if, if the team is trying lots of different strategies and not moving the needle, the headline is trying lots of different strategies to move the needle. If, if, if we're just repeating the same thing over and over again, we'll get the same results. So I, I mean, I hear what you're saying and it, and it works in an ideal setting, but when you're not on track, it, it's a little bit of a struggle for me.
Yeah, yeah, so then I think that to remember that when you're monitoring the interim goals, it's less about strategy, more about implementation. So that deployment, shifting of resources, the, the, you know, as I mentioned, if it's instructional coaching, do we need more time? Do we need to shift schedules around? Do we need to do this, that, or the other? Because, um, and then, and then when it's not on track, then it's the strati, then we talk about the strategy at the end of the cycle, at the, you know, the summative is going to signal strategy less than. So even if the superintendent is trying different things within the school year, and you can all weigh in here if I'm misrepresenting your work, if the superintendent is, they're not trying different strategies, they're tweaking implementation of the strategies that are in place. Does that, so it's not trying new things, it's giving more time to things, adjusting. And please feel free to speak to it from the staff end.
Well, the, I appreciate the, the question. I think that's like a management sort of, you know, conversation that we have as well too. When something's not working, how do you document the next steps and the follow-through to ensure that we are going to get a different result moving forward? And so what it's making me think of is in terms of the, the overall strategy of access, equitable access to high-quality curriculum instruction is kind of, that's been a theme of this year in utilizing our learning walks, our Unbound Ed inventory walks, making sure that students are actually not only in class physically, scheduled into the courses, algebra for example, but they're also receiving the IM instructional content that we've, that we've poured money into and resources in terms of professional development. It's gotta be in front of children as part of that access. And I think what we've seen is, I'll utilize this report as an example, we're just now seeing the fruits of that lift. What we are not satisfied with is, is still the result that we're at and seeing that the next iteration of that, that tweaking of that strategy is a, a very robust and articulated instructional coaching accountability model that is exhibited both in the instructional coach role, the administrative role at the building level, at the administrative role at the central office level. That alignment of that instructional coach accountability model is the next step of that strategy. That's what it's got me thinking about in terms of the way the question is being framed. Cause I, I understand where, it, it's similar in the idea of when we place management conversations in front of school leadership teams who have not met school goals, we wanna know specifically what the strategies are and how are we going to follow up as an accountability system to know whether or not these strategies are taking hold? And if not, why not? And then what tweak do we need to make or what pivot might we need to make in the middle of the course? What I'm thinking about out loud with you and sending maybe this is to your point is the potential frequency of pivots that could take place on, over the course of a school year? And, and how to log that? That, I'm, I'm just curious about that. I don't know, I don't have an answer to that, but it, it does happen frequently.
And so, and so that, I would say is a project management superintendent work item.
Agreed.
Yeah, and, and, and the information, you know, when we're talking about outcomes focus. So yes, the superintendent is accountable for project management, definitely. But the, but the board is not measuring that project management piece. They are measuring the actual results. So when the, when it comes time and the results are not changing over, you know, when the trajectory isn't changing, then that's where, and, and it continues not to change enough within, you know, as, as you're cycling through that goal, then that's where those, the level of conversation that the board might need to have is, it, it probably changes. And, and then that's where, where that piece around is the strategy sufficient given the trajectory that the goal is or isn't on.
I think that there's also another dynamic that occurs as we're having the conversation as a board and it's as a governing body, as we're having that conversation and we're hearing, this is the current reality, this is, these are the steps that we're taking next frequently. I will hear from, from community members, I'll hear from teachers, I'll hear from building leaders that perhaps it, it doesn't necessarily look like that in my building or it doesn't look like that for my student. Or, um, you know, what I'm hearing the superintendent and the team say, it, I don't see that happening. And so as board members, I think, you know, differentiating and helping the community know that that's a conver, well, and I don't know, maybe that's a question, does that conversation then go to the superintendent and their team to address what may look different in an extremely large system?
Are you asking me that question about, about how should that be addressed if board members are hearing?
Yes, and I think that there's education that needs to happen for, for community members as they hear our conversation that if we are, if we're going to hold the superintendent and their team accountable for results, then the superintendent is holding themselves and the team accountable for actions, then those actions should be turned over to, or those question, questions around actions or questions around, you know, I see it differently in my building or I see it differently in my student's classroom or, or something to that effect, then that should go to the superintendent, correct?
I would say yes, and I think that you have a, a board governance policy around items that are brought about the chain of command. That would fit in a chain of command. If there is a building level operational issue, then that should be forwarded to the superintendent per your policies. And maybe less of a monitoring issue and more of an operational customer service type issue that the superintendent may need to look into and resolve.
Yes.
Or, or not, or it may, or.
Yes, there's definitely that chain of command that exists and that we follow. But I think it fits stems from a monitoring conversation or the answers that we're receiving.
Then that still is an operational issue that would go, that would go to the superintendent? Because it's still about the day-to-day operations of, of the, even if it stemmed from a monitoring conversation. Does anybody have, have a difference of opinion on that or, or questions on that?
I just need to.
Why it would or wouldn't?
I just need to ask again, you said, at which point is it okay for us to question the strategy given the trajectory of the goal? At which point is it okay for us to? If our focus is, is results, but we're not seeing that, then at which point is it okay to question it?
So, so it is always okay to question what is working and what isn't. What I am saying is that when we're looking at interim goals, those are, if you remember, inputs, outputs, and outcomes, those are outputs which measure the implementation of the inputs or strategies knowable at the beginning of a cycle. So those are those middle of the year measures. It's measuring implementation. So when you're talking about the interim goals and those being on track or off track, that is signaling what is and isn't working in implementation of strategies. When we're talking about the final overall goal measure, which is based on a summative assessment, and that is not on track, then when you're having that monitoring conversation, then yes, you're going to also again be asking why it's not on track. And the answer there might be more about, may or may not be, a signal that a strategy, one of those higher-level strategies is not working and that the superintendent may come to you saying, we don't, we don't think that this strategy is right and this is why we're going to pivot to this, to another strategy. Is that?
The monitoring that we are able to ask about the strategy? Every monitoring session?
Every monitoring session, you're asking about what works and what isn't working.
So we should be only able to question during monitoring sessions about the strategy? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's the primary time that you're going to be asking those questions. Can you ask questions at other times? Absolutely, and I think you all have a process for that in your governance policies. I think what I'm talking about, and maybe this is getting confused. Kim asked about after, like, say tomorrow or next week, somebody watches the video of you all doing your monitoring report and the team lays out, you know, this is what we're doing here, this is what we're doing here, this is what we're doing here. And a parent calls and says, that's not what's happening for my student. Or a board member might hear from a teacher, that doesn't, that's not what it looks like in my building or what have you. Then what I'm saying is if that is a concern that is being brought to a board member, then I would say that should be shifted up the chain of command so the superintendent has an opportunity to address it. Because what the superintendent, it's an operational issue at that point possibly and the superintendent needs an opportu, opportunity to see if there is something happening in the moment that needs to be resolved. So for example, if I'm a parent coming to you with that issue and saying, that's not happening in my kid's building, that's not happening for my kid, do I want a board member to wait until next quarter to bring that up? Probably not. I probably want that issue, that's a customer service issue. That's probably an issue that I want resolved for my kid or to understand about my kid now and not next quarter when it gets brought up during a monitoring session. Does that, is that helpful to understand what the differentiation that I'm bringing up? Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, can you use a theory? And I want to go back to where this conversation started, with talking to students, sort of about the through line, what we said we were going to do, and what we actually did, and what we thought had an effect. But that makes really good to go, going from that, not only strategy and expectation, but goal management. And I'm wondering if there's an opportunity here to make a really small review on monitoring, to really help to eliminate that through line, from sort of what we said we were going to do, to what we actually did, and going back to each step, and going back to our next step. So I'm wondering if under sort of that third part of monitoring, we start with, what's going well, what is not going well, and then we go, what are we going to do? It feels like in monitoring, going not to do that, and I don't want to emphasize this, but it feels like it allows us to not only create a through line, but also provide a safety ratio. And I know safety has a lot of different activities, but it helps us to have a lot to do with how we operate, what we said we were going to do, what we did, and where we go from there. So I'm wondering if under sort of that third part of monitoring, we start with, we're doing a monitoring report, and we say, well, this is what we said we were going to do, this is what we actually did, and what we're going to do, and where we go from there. So I'm wondering if under sort of that third part of monitoring, we start with, we're doing a monitoring report, and we say, well, this is what we said we were going to do, this is what we actually did, and what we're going to do, and where we go from there. So I'm wondering if under sort of that third part of monitoring, we start with, we're doing a monitoring report, and we say, well, this is what we said we were going to do, this is what we actually did, and what we're going to do, and where we go from there.
Teri, I'm really glad that you brought that up, and I just want to jump in quickly, which it's like, sitting here for now almost two years, feeling like we have these conversations, and if all that really matters is the through line, then why are we having these conversations? I guess is, was sort of how I just felt about that. Like, I feel like we have these conversations because we're trying to be a thought leader, like Kelly said, a thought leader partner, and hope the superintendent to be successful, because we don't want, you know, we, we don't want an aha at the end. So I am glad you brought that up, Teri, because I hope that we're not sitting here for hours every month, asking these really thoughtful conversations, and taking time to prepare, and then not feeling like there, are they heard, are they moving, are they making an impact? It's easy to feel, in my opinion, in this seat, deflated, in asking these questions when you're not sure that they're actually doing anything to move the needle on student outcomes. And especially if the through line's all that matters, then I guess I, I just need a report, right? I mean, I don't need to ask any questions, if that's the answer. But I, I think there's more to the story. We all understand this is a complex job, and I, I, while I appreciate results, you know, I, I think we, our staff deserve a pat on the back for all the work that they do do, and I think it's okay for us to recognize that, and help to, to bring that forward as well, knowing this is a huge, complex district that has gone through a lot, and, you know, putting the pressure just on a through line, and, and not having a group of thought leaders up here with the superintendent to walk this walk, it just feel like we could be doing a better job as a team, and all being on the same page, and moving the needle forward.
So then I, I have to give you three seconds, and I have to get to the very top page here. What I think is, I've struggled with, as I've been monitoring, is we are mobile for ages, and what we said we were going to do in one area, or just what we said we were going to do in another, with regard to our goal. So I just agree with the question of being able to logically follow what we said we were going to do, to what we actually did, to then the next step, because it allows us to be, I didn't know I'm discerning about what I recall, or what I need to know about the particular board and the location strategy. So that's why I've got, I'm thinking, from not being able to, so if we were to track where the board is working well, and we're using a force of ingredients, and only then the order of operations work, if it works, and at what point do we need to double down, also in that conversation?
Okay, so I, I think I am picking up what is being laid down, and I think this is a conversation that I can have with superintendent and team about what that could possibly look like. I think, and I want to make sure everybody hears this, so I'm... Yep, so I think where my concern comes from is the what if the superintendent simply does everything he said he was going to do for the sake of doing it, because he said he was going to do it even if it's not working, in order to have a high say-do ratio. So I think that is an unintended consequence, if that is going to be something, if it's more about me doing what I said I was going to do, and not being able to, to pivot. So I, I think there's going, if, if that is something that, that is added to the report, I think that that's, I think there's going to need to be clarity about what that, what that means, and what that means for the superintendent, if that say-do ratio is low.
I agree with what you're saying, and, you know, you know, one of the things that we've always said is there has to be integrity, not only some of the, what we're doing, and how we're doing. And I don't know that, speaking of this expecting perfection, and all of our expectations, things that happen, and huge leaps and bounds that, it's wonderful, how the heck did that happen? I think what we're attacking, though, is that whoever is doing the work, and delivering the report, will do so, and will level the integrity that allows us to all, all grow.
Yep.
And I think we can't overpull the definition of perfection, first, and then the other thing, and it was trying to reach our goal. So I feel like, and also today, whoever's standing here...
We lost you.
You know, what I'm going to get there, it was not about why.
Absolutely.
And the data is going to come differently. So I, I want to congratulate that, because I think that's the next factor of what we can talk about, is the say-do ratio. I think we have to sort of have the position of being vulnerable, and being useful, and being able to articulate, not only both of those, but how exactly is the path or where we go.
Yep, that, our, is, Dr. Roberts and team, are you all clear about things that we might talk about for additions or potential changes to the report, as far as that, what are we going to do and next steps piece?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay. All right, just, I'll try to go quickly before, and, and then we're gonna go ahead and, and have the monitoring conversation. But I just kind of want to go through that, before we actually get to the monitoring conversation, I want everyone to look at the first paragraph under during goal monitoring. And I'm gonna go ahead and read it aloud while, so everybody out there hears it as well. Monitoring is about understanding the extent to which reality matches the board's adopted goals, interim goals. Monitoring is never about offering advice or recommendations. Most of monitoring is about understanding where we are and how we got here. The board's attention is focused on what's true for students, not on what adults are doing. Here are observations to look for and questions to ask that support effective progress monitoring. And note that none of the questions offer advice concerning which inputs, outputs the superintendent should select. And then it goes on to talk about SMART monitoring questions, and that are not managing questions. And, and I think, I think as we look through this, this again is, I just want to, as, as you're asking the superintendent, and to think about, you know, adding to the, to the report, and we talk about monitoring not being focused on inputs, but being focused on results, I, I just want, I, I just think that that's important, to be thinking about why we ask the questions we do. And below, it shows what SMART monitoring questions are. At the la, on the last page, it shows what SMART stands for in that rubric: strategy-focused, measure-focused, ask-oriented, results-focused, and time-bound. Why are we, when I say we, I'm probably saying I right now, and, and our SOFG coaching staff, why are we so insistent about SMART monitoring questions? About them being strategy-focused, measure-focused, ask-oriented, results-focused, and time-bound?
So I think we get off track if we don't keep it that way, if we're not, you know, asking our questions and referencing where we're coming from, and really looking at the data, then what are we talking about? We tend to get off track, and talk about things that have nothing to do with, with the report, and then we start getting focused in on the, to the inputs of the system, instead of understanding what is strategically going on with the system. So this is the why we craft it in this way.
Yeah, yeah, to get an understanding of what's strategically happening, to not get off, for the board not to get off track in their question asking. Does it mean that questions that don't fit into SMART descriptions can never be asked?
Those can be asked, but those questions could be asked in an email, some of those technical questions, so that they can still be answered, but we just try to alleviate having those at the board table.
Yeah. One of, one of the things in this goal monitoring, effective goal monitoring document, there's a link to an effective question-asking document as well, and I went ahead and printed that out for everyone. Just because I think, I think there, I think it's, I often find that it's important, I'm often clarifying this for boards that I work with, because there can be sometimes an assumption that those are the only questions that board, board members can ask, and that's not the case. It's just a matter of wanting to be very strategically focused around goals, and using that monitoring time very effectively. So on that document, if you, if you look at that, it talks about three reasons school board members ask questions. And that effective school board members focus on decision-making and monitoring questions during school board meetings, and to the extent that incidental and other questions are deemed necessary, the school board should create a system for those questions to be asked and answered as much as possible outside of school board meetings. And I, I believe you also have a, a policy for that in your board governance manual. So when we talk about monitoring questions, we want those questions to be around educating the board on school system performance, on goals and guardrails, and so that's why we want 50% of your time to live there. And so it simply means that time designated for progress monitoring, during that time, the board is going to be intensely focused on effective monitoring versus those technical tactical questions which can be asked ahead. Who has questions on that? Who has feelings about that? Or concerns? Anybody? Okay. Always feel free to ask and wonder about, about the questions, and what, where they might fit, technical, tactical, some of you have done, have sent me your questions ahead, and that's been, and when I have them, and able to give timely feedback, I hope that's helpful, so always feel free to do that. All right. And then the time-bound piece, why do we have an overwhelming majority of our time spent looking backwards?
I think because we're not in the buildings day-to-day, that it gives us an opportunity to have a clear reality of what's going on within school buildings. So spending more time having those conversations on past actions, instead of spending the majority of the time talking about future performance, we need to have a clear understanding of what reality is like.
Yeah, to, to really get that, that understanding of what reality is like, since you're not in school buildings. Who else? Why, why do we spend that overwhelming majority looking backwards rather than future-focused?
If we don't have an understanding of what's gotten us to the point that we're at currently, then how can we take proper action? Or next steps?
Yeah, how much is the Des Moines budget? Over $600 million? How many employees? 5,000? So if we're going to consider strategies, consider allocations, deployment of resources, shifting of resources, then having a really crystal-clear understanding of what got us here in the first place is definitely necessary before you start looking forward. So that is, when we talk about fiduciary responsibility of a board, just really being crystal-clear on the why, and, and when I say the, the governing team being crystal-clear on the why, so that involves the superintendent and, and the board, and having these conversations to get to that, what's worked well, what hasn't, and to really get crystal-clear on the, on the reality for students. Questions? All right. So I'm gonna go ahead and ask you to go ahead and get the conversation started. I'm just gonna sit and listen. And because we're using this as, as a training, I may interject, I may not, and just, you know, provide some sort of feedback after the fact, in the form of an evaluation, you know, using that evaluation rubric. So, Ms. Marderano, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, so board members, you can begin with questions. I, I'll get us kicked off. On page one, you note that we are on track for our ninth grade black males earning a B or higher in Algebra I. What do you attribute that success to?
Primarily, we're attributing that success to an increased access to that grade-level curriculum and instruction. And so that's twofold. Again, that's the adoption of a high-quality curriculum that is standard-based, is grade-level. And so that placing that curriculum in teachers' hands, and thereby placing that in front of students, is part one of that access. The other part of that access is ensuring that students are scheduled into the appropriate courses, so that they can actually see the results of those engagements in high-quality, rigorous learning activities, be manifested on, in this particular case, the Iowa assessment for this particular goal measure. So I think it's important to note, though, that, thank you for characterizing it as a success. It was the goal that we agreed on, and we met the goal. It just still doesn't feel good, I'm just gonna be honest with you, it just doesn't feel good for the team, as we talked about it even again yet today, and it's certainly not a place where we want to be. We want to celebrate those successes, and do so genuinely, for sure, because it is better than where we were at the same time last year. So that's great. It is just not even remotely close to where we need to be, and where we, where our students deserve us to be. I would feel remiss if I didn't make that statement earlier on, and maybe often.
Thank you.
Could I kind of follow up from that? It's actually on page three, under what's not going well. You do identify that between the goal, which is centered around, you know, performance of black males, there is a big gap between black males and all students, an 18.9% gap. So what continues to be those barriers in order to close that gap?
Yeah, we're attributing that, the, the barrier is predominantly about a lack of a engaging, affirming, and meaningful instructional framework. And so that's, I'm referencing that GLEAM framework that we've spoken about, maybe on a few different occasions. Because having the grade-level standards-based curriculum in front of students, that's just the first step. Creating an environment and a culture and a classroom where students feel welcomed, where they see themselves, not only in the curriculum, but they see themselves and the teacher in front of them, but they also see themselves in the experiences that they're having, and making sure that they understand their value and their significance, and that they're loved in that moment while they're learning content, that is the next level. That is GLEAM instruction, that is the, the culture and the environment that we're looking to create for all students. And that does, this doesn't exist consistently from school to school, from building to building in our math classes. And I'm, I'm referencing math because that's what this school target area is about. We have it, and it is happening in classrooms. We have it, and it is happening in classrooms. It's not happening consistently enough in classrooms on a day-to-day basis and across buildings.
So on page three, you stated that high schools met or exceeded the targets for teacher-student relationships. What do you attribute this to?
I'm sorry, Jenna, will you reference where you are again?
Page three, I think on your what's going well, interim goal 3A, oh, one high school met or exceeded the targets, sorry about that. What went well there?
Well, what, thank you. That one's something that we're still grappling with. That particular school is not doing necessarily anything uniquely strategically different than our other schools. Perhaps the execution of those strategies is taking hold more so than it is in some of our other schools. So that's a particular area that the team is grappling with right now. To learn more about what exactly can we glean from that one school at that high school level that would be applicable to all of our high schools that we might want to talk about. So the network team at the high school level, that includes both the Director of Teaching and Learning, Taylor and Mike Lukovich here, are working with those high school principals to glean those details, given the fact that there's no unique strategy deployed in that school that would be different than that there appears.
Thank you.
So before I ask my question, I just want to give a shout-out, Matt, to you and your team. I know you all work hard. I want to lighten the tone a little bit. I feel like we're so serious, and so I'm gonna try to ask my question with a smile. But I know you all are working very, very hard. So like, even though things haven't been met, you are putting in the work, and so I just want to say thank you to you and your team first, before I ask my question. So on page two, interim goal 3A, what do you see accounting for the percentage drop from 50% to 46% currently?
Would you repeat the last three questions?
Yep. On page two, interim goal 3A, what do you see accounting for the percentage drop from 50% to 46% currently?
I don't have a clear answer on that yet. The reason why is when we looked at the panorama data in the winter, this was not the trajectory that we were actually on. And so when we see a decrease in the spring in terms of panorama and student perception data, we actually didn't anticipate a drop in this at the secondary level, and we're still grappling to understand how that is. And so what you'll see specifically in goal 3A is sixth, seventh, and eighth grade data is, this is, again, it's collapsed data, right? There's six through 10 collapsed data. So that's not individually pulled out in terms of sixth grade only, seventh grade only. So one of the things that we hypothesize with right now is we know that that fifth to sixth grade transition in many of our data points, that's where we find dips in achievement, that's where we find dips in student perception data around safety, around health and well-being, and so that's a consistent measure. So we are looking at the data as we're disaggregated to see, is the sixth grade data trending in a similar direction where it's actually pulling down much of the collapsed data? That's a question that we still have to answer with that sixth grade data. Conversely, the same thing with ninth grade. We also see that same dip across the board in our ninth grade data, in that eighth and ninth grade transition. And so our hypothesis is, is that ninth grade data combined with that sixth grade transition data is actually pulling the collapsed data of 610 below the target. And so the schools got to do, and districts as well, but we got to do a lot more about disaggregating that data at the grade-level bands. Part of the challenge with that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Josie and others, is while we can pull black male students' data, we can't pull black male students in grade-level bands through panorama. Did I say that accurately? Thank you. So while we can pull black male student data as the aggregate from 610, what we cannot do through panorama, it's a restriction in the data set from panorama, we cannot pull specific black male students in ninth grade, black male students in sixth grade. It's just a, it's a restriction of the data set that panorama provides. And so what we're working with is with panorama to say, how can we actually do this on the front end moving forward, so that we can glean that very specific disaggregated data through two filters? Sure.
No.
The other...
Do you want to do that right now?
To do in addition?
Mike, hold on a second.
We're stopping.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So this is a point of, this is going to, this is a training point for Dr. Roberts. What will be happening as you come onboard is that this is going to be a conversation between the superintendent and the board, not the superintendent's team and the board. So when, this is part of the reason why we ask questions to be asked ahead as much as possible, so that the superintendent can actually be prepared with some of the answers. If a question should come up where the superintendent does not have the full answer, then that is, that's something where it is, it's going to be, we'll need to get that information to you. Because this is the superintendent's evaluation, not your team's evaluation, it does need to be a conversation with you. Even if you all are itching to tell a story, this has to be a conversation between the board and the superintendent, because it is his evaluation. Now, you all sitting up here for support at the moment, great. And until the superintendent is up to speed and feels comfortable and ready to do it, until you're ready to do it on your own, then I think rely on your team. However, it will be up to you to call on the team when needed versus the team interjecting. Does that all make sense?
Can I offer a question about that?
Yeah, please.
I, in my experience this year, one of the, I would say often or frequently, maybe, might want to just check my thinking in the moment about a particular statistic or a percentage, and I know Josie was on the receiving end of this, I have reached out to say, can you give me just a quick answer about this? Because I want to keep the conversation moving and maintain that momentum of where we are at our conversation. I'm wondering about things like that.
So I think that is, I think you've called to make sure that you have a data point correct to keep the conversation going. I think that's okay. What I heard in your last monitoring conversation was a conversation happening that we couldn't hear on, so people were answering from the team. Those of us watching on YouTube couldn't hear the answers. So I think there needs to be caution about that.
Yeah, fair enough.
And then, and then also, and then I think, again, if it's a small, quick point to make sure that you have, that you're iterating the correct data, or a percentage point, or what have you, I think that's acceptable. But I think beyond that, I think adding, it needs to, the conversation needs to be a continual, you know, the board is going to have follow-up questions, which may get to more information and that deeper conversation versus the whole team getting a turn to talk, if that makes...
I guess I'm just trying to understand, you know, as the superintendent of a large district, part of our hope is that the superintendent is empowering staff and subject matter experts to lead significant bodies of work. And I really struggle with how much time it takes for a superintendent to get up to speed to answer all of the questions of the board, and versus letting the superintendent lead in partnership with his team. And so I'm trying to understand why you feel so strongly about it, and would like to better understand that.
Sure. And I think the board, so I agree, the superintendent should be empowering his staff to lead, and that is the only way that the work is going to get done. However, when we're talking about the monitoring conversations, and the board having a monitoring report that it needs to have information about, and when we talk about keeping those conversations at that strategy level, and in that effective monitoring question level, and if the board is also doing their homework and giving the superintendent, when you get questions, do you sit and find all the answers, or do you farm them out to your subject matter experts?
Reach out to the team.
Yes. And so that's happening. However, if the superintendent isn't aware of what's going well and what isn't, and isn't able, doesn't know what's going on at that strategic level within the system, then I, as a board member, would probably find that concerning. So I think having, when prepared, when prepared ahead of time to do so. So I think it's important that the super, this is all part of that PLC and that whole conversation process, and what inspires the superintendent to do with their team. There's a scaffolding of, and a cascading, actually, of these board conversations down through cabinet, all the way down to the classroom. And so then it needs to scaffold back up, or cascade back up to the superintendent in order to be able to have these conversations with the board. So the whole team having a conversation just isn't conducive to the board understanding what the superintendent knows about what's going on in the system that you've hired him to operate? Is that responsive to your question, or do you have any other concerns about that?
I do have concerns.
Okay.
But you've shared your perspective, and I think I've shared mine.
Okay. And so, yeah, and that, and this is just the effect, yeah, in the effective monitoring, cadence of accountability, 4DX, all of those resources that have inspired that rationale, so, yeah.
May I?
Keep going? Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Certainly, I want to weigh in on this critical part of the process. This is the seeking clarification, the process slash monitoring. Well, I certainly appreciate the fidelity with which, or to which we are intending to have this process, particularly during this time of learning for me. Three thoughts. The first is, it's my intention to sort of develop and cultivate an encyclopedic knowledge of what is happening in the district, right? And certainly, that's my ambition, and I am committed to that. The second one, the ring, is just in terms of process, my leadership style is one which speaks a little bit to Jackie was alluding to, and that is empowering those who sit in the cabinet who work closely with me. And so while, yes, I want to have this encyclopedic knowledge of everything that's happening, during the process, I wonder if it's acceptable then to step aside and huddle with one of the cabinet members if the board poses a question, just to get clarification and a point that may be really tactical. And the reason I'm asking that brings me to my third point. Is there any consideration that we should give to not having the board wait for an answer or a clarification on a data point, when we can, in the moment, have the superintendent step aside, huddle with one of the cabinet members, get the answer, and get it to the board as opposed to having them wait for a long period of time?
So, thank you for those questions. I think if I'm understanding your wish to huddle, I think that's similar to what Matt might have talked about, about knowing, for example, that Josie's here to clarify a data point or what have you. I think to keep the conversation going, I think that in those moments, that can happen. When we talk about technical, tactical questions, and those very, very in, yeah, technical and tactical questions, we want those, what we talk about is having those sent to the superintendent ahead of time, so that, those are preparatory questions, essentially, for the board to have that understanding, that baseline understanding of technical and tactical. So technical things around the assessment, how it works, how it's administered, all of those types of things. And tactical questions around what might this look like in a classroom, what might, you know, there's a whole list of tactical questions. Having those asked ahead of time, and the superintendent, giving the superintendent the ability to actually get those answered for the board, and what can also happen with that, and what we recommend is that any question the board asks gets answered, and the board gets all of the answers to that question. What I'll often recommend to other boards, so long as they're timely, is that a Q&amp;A document be prepared and actually attached to the agenda items, so the public also has the benefit of seeing those technical and tactical questions as well. So hopefully, if, as the board and superintendent, as you all build your monitoring effectiveness muscle, there would be less of a need for you to huddle, because this will be at a more, at a higher-level strategic place, where your encyclopedic knowledge is going to serve you very well. But there might be moments, especially as you're building, as the board is building effectiveness, that that could happen, the huddle. You're welcome.
And I think that this process speaks to something that we, as a board, need to improve on, and that is, you've mentioned providing technical and tactical, tactical questions in advance, but our policy requires that questions, all types of questions, are asked in advance, so that the superintendent can be properly prepared with the answers, so that it, you have them in real time, or in the meeting. So if we, as a board, are following our policies, those questions will be asked in advance, the superintendent can have those huddles in advance of the meeting, and we'll be prepared for the questions at the table.
So can I clarify on that process, then? We're asking all questions in advance, then we're going to get responses only from technical and technical, and they're going to bring, so then we don't have any questions at the board table, or we're just going to re-ask the questions that have already been asked and responded to an email at the board table?
Yeah, so the, any questions that are asked in advance, you'll, we will receive responses to, from the superintendent, as they come in, and Matt's been very responsive in the past, and those, the conversation is built around those questions that are asked, leaving the technical and tactical out of the monitoring questions at the board table, but asking those questions that are, those high-level strategic questions at the board table, so that our public has an understanding of the, our past, what got us to where we are at right now, how does reality match, match what's being reported to us, what we're hearing, and so that we can then discuss next steps as well.
That's just, I mean, if we're going to get it via email, I don't know, that we need, we could just post them, right, for the public to see or something, I guess, is my thought. It feels like if it's a conversation, sometimes things come up, it's a conversation, versus we're going to prepare everything, then, I don't know, what do we need to be doing, like, a show for, I guess, kind of, is my thought. If we're just going to ask the questions that we, if it's for us, to see if our superintendent's being effective, and we're getting those answers, and we're happy with them, then, or, I guess that's a further conversation. I think that just warrants everyone's time, and, you know, what's effective and what's not.
So I think, I think part of the thing here, part of what we're talking about is the do-your-homework piece. So board members arriving at board meetings, having already read the monitoring report, having already shared technical and tactical questions with the superintendent, and having already come up with at least three or four SMART questions, each regarding the monitoring report. And then the idea behind that being that that is a baseline starting place for the conversation, and then there would naturally, because it's a conversation, and as I've heard you all have during your conversations, a question asked here might lead to a follow-up over here, or you might follow up on your own question based on perhaps additional information that you hear from the superintendent. They may have more insight by the time they, over and above what was originally answered by the time they come to the board. the time they come to the board table as well. So it's, it's not just about, it's a starting, building that starting point and having the opportu, and the more that the board comes with prepared questions, the more effective, affected those questions are going to continue to become because practicing your questions by asking them ahead, we get better with practice. And so writing those out also is helpful. So it's not just to have those, a list of questions and answers for people to read. It's the base for the conversation to start.
All right, back to our who, what, why questions? I have more of a clarifying question. Maybe I'm misreading something, so I apologize. But on page three, under what is going well, you have interim goal three, oh, now I get it, never mind. It was pointing out one high school was succeeding the target. Because I was looking at the overall interim goal is not on target. So, okay.
Yeah, sorry Kelly, that, that statement in that particular area was meant to say that there's opportunities to glean from that success moving forward.
Okay. So if I could go back to then, three A, page two, and that we are not on target or did not meet target for the teacher-student relationship, what's happening in that area?
Well, a couple of things. One is that's the particular interim that we didn't anticipate dropping. And so that sixth grade and ninth grade transition is one aspect of that. The other aspect of that, that we are aware of is our SEL curriculum is hit and miss. And so before we get to the, I've got a future forward sort of facing answer to that, that particular statement, but that's also contributing to that. There's, there's, we lack consistency in our SEL implementation across the board. And in this particular case, we're clogging it to that six, 10 collapsed data set. And it's exacerbated in sixth grade and exacerbated in ninth grade through those transition years. And so there's more work for the team and myself to do specifically around disaggregating that data to know if this hypothesis that I'm lifting up right now is indeed a root cause factor.
I'll ask another question. Page two, three C. So that is the percentage of black males that are earning a B or higher in Algebra one. And when we look at our data in semester two, 16%, which isn't like a strong percent. So while we met the target, who is still struggling?
In this particular data set, are students who identify as black male with IEPs and students identify as black male with, that are also multilingual learners? Students who identi, sorry, got it. I'm going to add maybe a little bit to that. There is a small percentage of students that would be not meeting this particular interim goal because they're not scheduled into Algebra. They might be in an Algebra Foundations class, which is a two-year course. And so it would be counted as not meeting in this particular interim goal as we measure it today. So there's an aspect of that that is in this data set.
Are these the who questions?
Pardon me?
Were these the who questions?
Yes, that past focus questions.
So I wanted to go back to, and Jenna already asked this, this question. So on page two, interim goal three A, one high school met or exceeded the target for teacher-student relationships. Can't remember if the question Jenna asked was about the strategies that worked or what worked in that in one school. Can you repeat what you said about?
Sure, sure. Yeah, the, that particular school, there's, there's no unique strategy that's different than what we're doing at a systems level at all the high schools. And so the team is impacting some of those questions with that specific school to learn if there's any nuanced, you know, maybe execution of those strategies that was actually, you know, more well-received or done more efficiently or more effectively that could have been the, the difference maker. There's just a lot of questions that come from that particular school when they did meet it, but there was no unique overarching strategy that was deployed. And so it perhaps, you know, part of the question is, and the wondering and the follow-ups are what, what was the execution like of those particular strategies? And then was there nuances within that that we can glean some applications to apply other way, other places?
That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
What are the limitations or what are the barriers in getting black males scheduled into the courses that would?
I think the-
The Algebra courses?
Sure. I think limitations actually exist prior to getting to high school. So when we talk about foundational math skills in our primary grade levels through sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, I think that puts students actually on a trajectory to be in Algebra by their ninth grade year. So that holds true for all students, but it's also specifically true for our students who identify as black male. And so the, the limitations are at the primary grade levels. Because that track of where students actually begin to, the, the level of grade level math that they are performing on is determined by how those foundational skills and, and that demonstration of mastery through those primary grades and then when they get into sixth grade. There's also work to be done in supporting students with IEPs who identify as black male in this particular grade bands as well too. And so continuing to implement high-quality curriculum and instructional pedagogy for students who may not be scheduled into an Algebra class, you know, for their ninth grade year, but advancing and enhancing that mathematics experience and that math identity in a classroom that would get them to an Algebra class, you know, before the, you know, by semester. So there, there's some opportunities there. There's, there's things the team would need to discuss about what it, what opportunities we can actually deliver on going into next school year.
What are we doing specifically for black males in providing access to that grade level instruction and at those younger, younger grade levels?
So there's, there's no, there's no different, there's not a different curriculum in terms of the access. It's the same curriculum. There is the opportunity at those earlier grade levels to have that math identity be developed in terms of mindset and expectations of what we, how we speak to children and how we pour into children about their, their uniqueness and their giftedness and their brilliance earlier on. And this lends itself to the, one of the overarching themes about this data set is still about mindset and it's still about adult mindsets. I think the phrase in SOFG is adults must change before student outcomes can change, adult mindsets can change before student outcomes can change.
Student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change.
Until adult behavior change, right. So adult behavior changes when adult mindsets change. And we begin to show up in all places and all spaces that speaks to the gifted brilliance that each and every student has. And in this particular case, in this particular report, specifically our black male students. And so being genuine and bold in that stance and making sure that we are delivering that unapologetically at all grade levels and in all spaces, that is a missing aspect of, of setting those foundational skills and those foundational opportunities for students to gain that access.
Thank you. Are there any additional past focus questions for the superintendent and team?
Una más, one more. Page two, under what's not going well, the teachers-to-student relationship perception data for black males decline from fall to spring. Then what didn't work?
You're, I just want to clarify, you're referencing interim goal three A?
Interim goal three A, yes.
Yeah, that's the, the particular measure where we've got hypotheses right now, Maria, where those hypotheses are, that, that collapsed data of six through 10 is heavily being impacted negatively through sixth grade transition and ninth grade transition. Again, that's a hypothesis. There's more data collection to actually be able to tease that out. Panorama doesn't offer that level of filters to get to that data, so we've got to do it in other ways.
Es todo. That's it.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you.
All right, future focus questions?
Yes, I have one. What if any changes in resourcing may need to be made to be on track in meeting the goal?
The, the primary change in, in resourcing is through time, time spent on the right things. And so what's in your monitoring report in terms of what are we going to do next is an articulation of an aligned instructional coaching accountability model that includes district office administrators, school administrators, and instructional coaches doing those side-by-side walks in classrooms for that end-time coaching, but then calibrating on what are we seeing and what are we going to see differently the next lesson? That's one aspect of that. So that time commitment and how we're spending that time on the right conversations around raising the rigor of instruction in classrooms, that's going to change. The other change is going to be the, the emphasis and the focus of professional learning communities with teachers being highly integrated with the, what they refer to as the Unbound Ed Planning Process or Planning Protocol. Through these Unbound Ed walks, particularly from January on, that, that inventory has lifted up where while we have access taking place in terms of the curriculum being in front of students, the PLC conversations in classrooms and math classes are focused mostly on the assessment. And so it's that interim assessment, that sort of lagging data and about what happened on those assessments as opposed to that leading indicator data saying what instructional strategies are we going to use in the next lesson or the next week in the next unit? That's actually going to move the needle for students in the assessment that we provide. So that particular time and focus on PLCs is going to be shifted to actually be more forward-facing as opposed to that lag interim, you know, that lag data phase of assessments.
I have one more, and this is, you don't have to answer it tonight because I think it's probably a loaded question in a sense, but I know you've, and this is probably a technical question, so I'm going to say that too upfront. But you have talked about the mindsets, and I know we've heard that many times. And I'd just be interested to know and just, I know that's a heavy lift when you're talking about changing the mindsets of individuals. And so would be really interested in learning what we're going to be doing as a district to start to shift those mindsets. And you don't have to get into that tonight, but very interested in that even outside of this space, just to learn more about that.
I can give you, the high level answer to that question is that gleam instructional framework that teases out and actually deconstructs that engaging, affirming, and meaningful instructional classroom, about what that looks like, sounds like, and feels like. So that piece of that instructional framework has been missing in our district for many years. And so that, that's a high level answer to that. What's coupled with that are these aligned instructional accountability coaching conversations that are side-by-side from instructional coaches to school administrators to district administrators, and I'll include curriculum coordinators in that regard too. These side-by-side coaching conversations, we're, we're calibrated on that gleam instruction, and we are coaching for and supportive and holding accountable those conversations to see in shifts and changes in instructional pedagogy and the student experience at a high level.
Dawn, I thought you were going to ask if they were all going to have pennies. Some of us at this table definitely know what the pennies mean. So under page three, bullet two, under what was going well, you talked about the increase between 2021 and 2023 of having more reliable data. So the number of students tested has significantly increased. So congratulations to you and the team for, for lifting that and accomplishing that. How, how are you going to maintain that, right? Like that's, we always want to make sure we have the good data set that is a reliable data set.
Yeah, I think it's the idea of, I'll use, I guess, maybe a phrase that what gets measured gets done. And so that's a, that's a point of measurement of recognizing that reliable data is actually what drives decision-making. And so the, the district directors, both directors of teaching and learning and principal supervisors, did a really nice job of putting that in the forefront of school leaders, of recognizing that having that reliable data is actually how we make decisions, both at the building, at the district level. And so improving and increasing the participation rates is important when we're making systemic decisions across buildings and across the entire district. So it's a point of conversation that is measurable.
Last kind of a question. With regards to the data under three A, and we've talked about the, the panorama survey data, teacher-student relationship, do you have ideas and thoughts around how might, you know, what, what's some work to be done? And it's probably definitely more of a technical question, but maybe it's more even like, how will you monitor that? And what might that look like differently?
Well, there, there's a couple of things that is going to be a lot of part of our work and having Dr. Roberts is going to be incredibly advantageous for us moving forward in terms of his leadership and his experience and what, what he brings to this particular answer, which is there's challenges with panorama moving forward based on laws that have been passed and that active consent. And so I'm going to start my answer with a question, which is, we don't know yet how that's going to actually impact participation rates moving forward. So there, there are some challenges with utilizing and relying, in, in some cases solely on panorama as the indicator. So part of the next step is to explore other potential interim metrics to gauge students' experiences, which includes talking to students and actually asking students questions. Right now, we do that through the panorama and we do it through student groups and things like that at the building level. And that looks various ways depending on the building. Maybe looking at a more formalized way of doing that differently is an opportunity for us to move forward to gain that student perception data without relying on a potential metric that we're never going to really be able to predict the, the denominator, the N-size count that will have potential implications for fluctuations in percentages and things like that. So there's, there's more questions as an answer to that particular question that you have about panorama.
Have we seen all the, the, the budget impacts? Or are there any additional strategies that are going to impact the budget as you are thinking about and answering those questions as a board? Do we, should we be aware of anything that's coming down the pipe?
I think that's coming down the pipe. I think as we get further into these conversations, there's the real potential of some reallocations of resources based on decisions around what metrics we're going to utilize and, and or some strategies that would change accordingly. So I think that, that, that's coming, but I don't, I think Dr. Roberts would have a more specific answer here in the coming weeks and the coming months.
Thank you. Any additional questions, board members? What can the board do to help?
That was my question.
Ms. Alonso wants to know, what can the board do to help? Ms. Alonso wants to know, what can the board do to help?
My honest answer is, is you've already done it, and he's sitting right in front of us. So that's the, that's the first answer to that. And I, I can't emphasize that enough. The gentleman's been here less than two weeks, and he's already had a significant impact on how we actually look at data and how we're thinking about through it and how we organize as a team. So I think that's, you've done that. To follow with that is, I think we're going to continue to need voices and advocates beyond our district and beyond our school walls around recognizing the incredibly wonderful things that take place in our district, in our classrooms, in our spaces every day, all day long. I think sometimes we can get lost as, as an organization in the minutia of the data set, knowing that that data set doesn't actually tell the whole story, the whole picture of the student experience and the staff experience. We have got work to do, no doubt, all over the board in many, many respects. But I think one of the things we have to do, as a part of that work, is to celebrate where we are actually doing extremely well, and there are so many of those opportunities and areas that we are continuing to lift that up and champion that up. Some of that actually happened again yet today as we started the meeting off about just some of the things that, some of the board members were sharing. Dr. Roberts shared Lincoln's hopeful success tonight. There, there's so many things that are happening that we've got to continue to tell our story, and we've got to continue to do that very, very well. And so I would continue to actually come to the board and say, thank you for your, for doing that with us, and we can, we can do more as a team.
Thank you.
Mr. Mack, could you, could you elaborate on minutia?
I missed that last part of that question.
Could you elaborate on minutia? What does that mean?
Did I say the word minutia?
See?
How did I say it?
You said minutia.
I know, but I, I don't know the, the context in which I use the word minutia.
We get caught up in the minutia?
Oh, we get caught up in the, the political arena as an organization, and we talk about things that are not about kids-centered things sometimes as an organization, and continue to put kids at front and what kids are experiencing on day in, day out, and all the wonderful things that are happening, because every one of us shows up about kids and putting kids first. And that was, that needs to be, continue to be how we move forward.
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarifying question.
I just needed to make sure I understood.
Thank you, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. If there aren't any additional questions, Cindy, do you have anything additional that you'd like to go over regarding our monitoring practices and coaching this evening?
I think, I think the only thing is that I know that this is a definite shift in thought around monitoring progress the way that it's described in this guide. It, it may look different than what you might be coming from. It may look different than what each of us thinks is ideal. When we talk about student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change, when we talk about the need for instructional leadership, for that mindset shift that needs to happen in order to serve our kids, I guess I would, I would just encourage everyone on the governing team to really dig in and, and give it a try, to try to embrace it, just like we ask, like the superintendent will be asking all of his staff to embrace mindset shift in order to serve our kids. Again, what happens at the board table echoes all the way down through the system. So if, if the board can become, the board and superintendent can become more effective at these conversations, then, then I think that could really go a long way in serving kids. So that, that would be my coaching wish. I know there's varying degrees of acceptance, and I, I can appreciate that, but just really encourage that the, the attempt at behavior change start at the dais. The only other thing that I would mention is when you come to the after-goal monitoring section, want you to note that the language used is accept versus approve. We accept the monitoring report or we don't accept it, and, and that language there is, it may seem like semantics, but it, it speaks to the idea that the board has pre-authorized the superintendent to do the work of achieving the goals so long as they are honoring the guardrails. So he is not seeking authorization, rather reporting, and you're going to choose to accept the report or not based on those bullets that are under that section. So just wanted to point that out as well before you went ahead and voted on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we have one more item to discuss in our work session, and that is our board self-evaluation. The time is 7:50. I would like to take a five-minute recess. We'll start back at 7:55 with our self-evaluation, please. Thank you. All right, the board self-evaluation is our next and final topic of the evening. We received a bit of a truncated question from Cindy. I will turn it over to you to walk us through the conversation.
Okay, yeah, so I think what I provided was just a, as Kim mentioned, a truncated quarterly self-evaluation worksheet. And essentially what I did was use the results of the self-evaluation from last time, from the first quarter of this year, and what, what the note, what was noted as far as what you were committing to and/or what you were still deciding. So I think you can go fairly quickly through this to see what's, what has occurred and what you're on track with as far as those items in the last column in yellow.
We're currently looking at the DMPS Board Quarterly Self-Evaluation, this colorful sheet that's been printed for us.
And there's a QR code for this, this one as well, for those in the audience who want to take a look at it. So I want to hit on the, on the yellow ones first. I think I know the answers to these, but just want to, want to verify, and I can, and, and talk about those briefly. And then I think the biggest part of the discussion is around vision and goals and values and guardrails and the whole idea around community, community engagement. So first thing, under monitoring and accountability, the board will begin tracking its use of time and reporting to the public. That was your plan to occur between last time and now? And I know the answer is yes, because I heard it on the agenda.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rosie.
Good job, yes, Rosie. Good job, Rosie. Thank you. And that's something, too, I would encourage at some point in time, you know, just have the board, board members giving that a try, too, and seeing if they can get the same numbers as Rosie does. Okay, the, the board, the other thing, the board unanimously agreed during the most recent self-evaluation that all board members adhered to all policies governing board operating procedures during the previous evaluation period. So all these blue pieces were about what, what the board said that they would work to, they would work to having all of these blue items marked yes. So that first one is agreeing that all board members adhered to all policies governing board operating procedures during the previous evaluation period. And that would be up to you all to let me know.
That's a yes.
Any disagreement there? How about board members and superintendent? And this would be interim superintendent, since Dr. Roberts just started. All board members and the superintendent agreed during the most recent self-evaluation that none of the board members have given operational advice or instructions to staff members. Okay? So Matt says, you've checked the box there? I say yes. All board members have memorized all of the board's goals and the current status of each. Work in, work in progress? And then the next one, I didn't have marked because that's about having an 80 or higher, so well, that'll be for the future.
Work in progress.
And then the last thing, under continuous improvement, the board will begin tracking its use of time. The board will use time to recognize accomplishment of its students and staff regarding progress toward goals and interim goals. So you, you're tracking the use of time, yes, but using time to recognize accomplishments of students and staff regarding progress towards goals and interim goals. Is that happening?
It is not happening currently. I can, I can commit to having conversations with board leadership and Dr. Roberts at agenda planning to focus on this during our district recognitions.
And I think that, just hearing what Matt said at the end of the monitoring session around keeping, that we need to keep telling the story, this, this would be a great opportunity to tell the story about those, you know, those success stories around your goals and guardrails at those recognitions. Yeah. Wonderful. Okay. And then the, and then the other thing, which is a big thing, is to discuss community engagement around hearing vision and values. I did provide those DMPS vision and values engagement considerations with a rough timeline of how long each of those phases might take for you all to consider. So I think that it's, I think, I think I provided questions ahead of time around when will you be ready to do this? Because it's not, not a matter of if you'll do it, it's just a matter of when. And then deciding on who you're, if you're going to do a broad, broader engagement and outreach, or if it would be a grass-tops approach. And then I would recommend that the board be very clear, get, get on the same page around what get on the same page around what the board means when you talk about having a, hearing from a diverse, hearing diverse feedback or diverse viewpoints, you know, is that representative? When we talk about representative, is that representative of demographically a population? Is that representative of geographical, you know, geographically? Is that representative positionally and whatnot? But just having that understanding amid the seven of you of what that means as you're getting ready to decide who it is you're going to be engaging and outreach in.
Cindy, can you talk a little bit about what you mean by more, a more representative grassroots approach? What does that entail? Or what does that look like?
So I think the difference being, is it going to be, I think someone talked about it as an all-call, like getting out far and wide with your engagement and outreach? Or do you want to do a grass tops approach, representative groups and groups of representatives or leaders throughout the community? That, so grass tops folks that who represent populations, perhaps?
What would be the reasoning for not, for doing a grass tops approach? Like, why would that be on the table as an option? Why would one board consider taking that approach over an all-call approach?
I think it just depends on if you think you need to take more of a pulse versus getting, taking a pulse to see if the goals that you're continuing to strive toward are still representative of community vision. And to continue, I think one of the things that's mentioned is that when you're talking about changing goals, usually it's best not to change them while, and it's in that monitoring guide, but while you're still working toward them. So when you're, if you have a grass tops approach, it takes a pulse. Are these still the same goals, same goal buckets that we're looking to continue at the sunset of these goals? Or do we need to do a more wholesale change of a goal or goals? Is that? I could probably try to.
Yeah, I guess the question would be, if the pulse comes back no, then is that sufficient enough to re, would then at that point in time, would we maybe think as a board, do we need to have a larger conversation? Or?
I think you could consider that. I think you could either, at that point in time, you could either get the, if it's not these, then what? What are we missing as far as vision? And then you could also decide as a board that it might kick in the need for a broader, a broader reach.
I guess I just love, the magnitude of this, I think, is pretty significant because when I think about the governance structure, really, the power that the board has is the vision and the values. And we haven't been in the community in four years. The world has changed so much. And I think it would be an incredible disservice to our community to do one grass tops meeting as opposed to showing up, much like we did with superintendent search process to listen to people. I think it shows a lot of respect to show up where they are and ask their opinions. And I really hope we consider that approach. And if it's, because this isn't the right time, because we're introducing a new superintendent, maybe we wait until the fall. But I think this is a big responsibility for the board, and I would hate to see it diminished to one grass tops meeting.
Were you suggesting one meeting? No, yeah, that's what I was just going to clarify. It wouldn't necessarily be one meeting. It might be multiple, multiple meetings with, like focus group type meetings with grass tops leaders is kind of how.
Yeah, I mean, I want to hear from parents. I want to hear from everybody that lives in this community. And I think to pick and choose, which is in essence what you're suggesting, I think is not an approach that I would support.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I'm not suggesting it. I'm suggesting that you all decide among yourselves which way you want to go. And then I can support however you need.
I really, I, pardon. So will you give some clarification about overlapping, per se? Not saying, not putting words into Dr. Roberts' mouth, but I'm assuming there might be some things that he's intending on doing with the community. And I know it's two separate things, because we're talking about visions and values as far as a board, but then you also have new superintendent wanting to go out and hear from the community as well. So how much of that do we glean from in our process? Or do they not overlap at all, and they're two completely separate processes?
Yeah, and that's a conversation that Jackie and I have been having as well. While they seem like they should marry well, there are actually reasons that they don't. A few things that I've noted are that when, and one is, you know, you're going to be doing owner service, the superintendent is going to be doing customer service. And I'll give you an opportunity to speak to what it is that you're looking to accomplish. But in a nutshell, what I mentioned was that it would be around building relationships and being intensely focused on operational insights and the how of the work. And of course, if there's anything you want to say specifically about your plans, please, please do.
Yeah, thank you for that. So there are two thoughts that I have. The first is I certainly see tremendous opportunity and value in a superintendent and board engagement of the community at various points throughout the year. But in terms of my personal vision as superintendent, I want to focus on three things when I think about community engagement. They are frequent, they are consistent, and they are transparent. As a matter of fact, just as a practice, I want to be able to create space where there is a monthly convening that I will have with members of the community, right? And I'm certainly going to work with Matt and the cabinet to try to figure out sort of tactically what does that look like? Is it coffee shops? Is it at a school building? Do we create a space at the district office? But I want to make sure that the community and all of our stakeholders never have to worry about whether or not they have access to me to hear my perspective and to share what is on top for them in terms of operations. So that's my plan, those three areas.
Thank you.
Doctor, I just may ask Dr. Roberts to follow up on what Duana just asked. Over the next three to six months, is there a particular strategy that you will be engaging in, in the community, different than maybe this monthly check-in? So do you have listening, is that something that you're considering or that the team has, the staff or team has talked about?
We haven't talked about it. It is certainly something that is on top of mind for me. I want to make sure that I'm collaborating with the team and then to get back to the board, so that you all are looped into what my thinking is.
Yeah, so thank you for clarifying your plan or your frequency. Frequent, consistent, and transparent. So a very regular cadence of engagements is what it sounds like. One of the things, too, that I mentioned around the two not necessarily going well together isn't, is about your new and novel. The board is here and established. So when the community comes, they're likely going to, it changes who they want to speak to. And so they're going to be probably more interested in chatting with the superintendent. And then the idea around, and it also changes what folks tend to want to talk about. So when the superintendent and board are together, if folks are given the choice of talking about current issues, current pain points, whatever it might be, versus those longer range investment type, what is the outcome? Those ephemeral vision type things. Given the choice, folks are often going to choose immediate and urgent matters versus that outward, long-term vision. So, and the board and superintendent overcoming that, and one thing, it's not, it's that whole challenge around your, the people in a school district are both owners and customers. And they're knowing which hat they wear during which question, question being asked or at which moment. I think the board and the superintendent overcoming that would be very challenging.
I guess I just, I want to push back a teeny bit on that because if we're about customer service, in essence, what we're saying is, you can talk to the board about this, and you can talk to the superintendent about this, as opposed to knowing our lanes within the context of the same meeting. So I just, I'm just really trying to grapple with it because I know that the superintendent wants to know what the vision and values are of the community. And much like, I want to hear from the community about what the pain points are because that is relevant to what the superintendent's thinking about. So I just, I'm trying to understand, and if that's the fixed point of view, then something, we can't do both at the same time because it's too confusing for the community to have to discern the difference. I think the owner should be on us, as opposed to asking them to come to two things. So, which is what we'd be doing if we were going out to the community, doing a vision and value session at the same time that the superintendent's going in the community to do listening sessions.
I like the idea of focusing on one first. Thinking back to our conversations with community and explaining the role of the board and explaining the role of the superintendent, it's quite confusing for a lot of people still. And I think that in order to minimize that, it's important to take that into consideration. I think that we need to go out into the community. I feel like that's where our vision is, and that's where our values are. And if we're going to represent that, I think we have to go to it, to them. And I would support in doing things separately. I think just for the benefit of people's, maybe just for the benefit of understanding, and I think the benefit of trans, or the sake of transparency. I think that if we're trying to be transparent about the work that we do, I don't think that we're intentionally trying to not be transparent. I think that in order to create, I don't know, an educational opportunity for the community, I think it's important to differentiate and to do things separately.
So can I bring us back to the original question? And then we can work on the logistics. So if we could go around and state whether or not we'd like to do a more targeted, what Cindy's calling grass tops approach to community engagement? Because I don't think that there's a question. I think all of us want to do community engagement. Is that a resounding yes? Yes, okay. So do we want to do a more targeted approach to that engagement? Or do we want to do a more wide-sweeping approach? So let's answer that question, and then we can get into the logistics of the when and the how and the who? Is that all right with everyone?
What was the second option? You said a board approach, and then the other was?
So a very targeted, grass tops approach is what Cindy's calling it a grass tops approach. In my mind, it's a very targeted approach where we're going to say, these are the individuals in the community that we definitely want to speak with. These are the leaders in the community. These are, whether it's faith leaders, or parents, or students, or a targeted approach versus a, we are going to go out and we are going to have a large sweeping survey, a large sweeping event, similar to what we did with the superintendent's engagement and outreach process. Did I discern the two?
Yeah, I think that what I, in my statement, I think I already shared what I preferred.
Go out and wide.
Yeah, okay, absolutely.
Wide sweeping. Jackie?
In the community, sweeping.
Yes. Go ahead, Terri. Okay, thank you. We'll call that hybrid, making sure that the individuals, and I think that we did that during the superintendent engagement and outreach, we made sure that we were getting various organizations and community members reached specifically. So, Duana?
Hybrid.
Kelly?
Hybrid.
So hybrid is like what we did for superintendent search, where we had a general survey, we had some open times at schools, but we also were intentional in our spaces that we showed up in the community. Is that fair?
Yes, we were not going to stop until we got various different voices heard.
Yes, I think we should do what we did for the superintendent search for our next, for our vision and values listening sessions.
Okay, so I would agree, I think, Dr. Roberts, is that? Okay.
Certainly aligned with a hybrid approach as well.
Okay. So similar to the engagement and outreach that we did for the superintendent search, I think it's appropriate to appoint an ad hoc committee to get us started on this work and talk through some of those logistics and timing. Would every, everyone be amenable to development of a hybrid committee? Or not a hybrid committee, oh my goodness. A committee to discuss the hybrid approach to community engagement?
Yes.
Yes, okay, yes, yes, okay. So board members, if you are interested in serving and/or leading that committee, please reach out to board leadership, let's say by the end of the week. And Terri and I can discuss the purpose of that committee, what we want the outcomes of that committee to be, and then we can get the ball rolling on not only timing, but also the individuals that we will be reaching out to. Cindy, am I missing anything?
No, I think it's a matter of, I think that's the how. And then it's just the when you're going to, but it sounds like the committee is going to.
Well, and maybe we need to take a bit of a litmus test of the urgency of this from each of the board members as well, to better understand. And if Dr. Roberts is starting his listening sessions immediately, of course, to get into the community in present, when would you ideally like to begin hours as a board? So would it be in three months? Would it be in six months? I'm just throwing random, would it be in three weeks?
May I ask a question of Matt, if that's okay? Because part of it might be if we had to work backwards. So what I think we talked about was. So what I think we talked about was if there were any shift in the goals, they wouldn't take effect until next year at the earliest. If the goals had budget implications, then the question I would ask you, Matt, is, you know, when do you really start scoring the budget? And would Shashank need to understand any potential shifts or direction?
Yeah, and I just want to clarify, or ensure that I'm hearing you correctly, Jackie. So if, if we hear from our community during those community engagement and outreach sessions that our current vision and values need some adjustments? Or we need to change our vision and values based on that community engagement and feedback? Is that what you mean when you say change goals?
Yes, so, or if, if for some reason we decided to add one. So I think that the, kind of the question is, when would you need to know, just from a timing perspective and budget perspective?
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, and if I narrow that down, you know, based on what the process we went through this school year, I think we would need to know that by November. As a, not a hard and fast month, but in that timeframe, late, you know, fall, we would need to know that. If there's, if it's going to have implications for FY25, for sure.
Thank you.
So we would need to have codified both goals, interim goals, guardrails and interim guardrails by November in order to properly, properly allocate resources in the fiscal year 24, 25 school year. Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a lot. Can I also ask another question on top of that? Which is, I was not there for your initial listening sessions when the board developed our current goals. What went into that? Like pre, I, I know that you listened to the community, you then took data from the district, you know, they brought that in. But I remember attending one of those sessions, I don't, maybe there wasn't data. I don't know, for some reason I felt like there was some pre-work that the district had already done to prepare for those meetings? Maybe not, I guess I don't, I don't know, I'm assuming, but I, I thought.
So the community meetings that, that were done?
So, so yeah, when you guys were looking to set up the goals and when you went out and listened to the community, was there pre-work done by the district staff to like set the tone of the conversation and provide information to the community? Or was it strictly just, we're open-ended and we're listening to the community, then we're going to look at the data? Like I'm just trying to figure out, is there, is there a preparation phase that would have to go into effect if we're looking at new goals?
So we were very intentional about the questions we asked. We basically asked, there was an education component around what goals and guardrails are. And Terry, you can chime in as you're remembering it, if you're remembering this too. I know Terry and I did a session together at Scavo. And so we had a PowerPoint presentation. We gave some background information about what it is we were, were looking for and what we were planning to do around setting, setting goals. And actually, we didn't do guardrails at that time. We had decided just to do goals and we were going to stick with management limitations, which were part of our policy governance. And the questions, the, the basic questions were, what is it that you want students to know and be able to do? And I think there was one, one more. What is, and Terry, I can't remember. I might actually. Yep, what is the impact you want our school system to make on our students? And what do you want students to know and be able to do? Those were the two questions that everyone was asked. We actually did it in a, everyone put stickies up on the, on a, and then those got organized. And the board, from every session that the board did, all over town and with students. And we actually went and did some additional ones with students, I think too, because there was a feeling that the, that student, yeah, you were, and Dwana was part of that as well.
We did high schools and went and had, and asked and posed those same questions to them as well.
Yep, and then when the board sat down, we had, our coaches at the time had organized that all thematically. And we looked at that along with student performance data and, and talked through it with staff and the board around those high leverage areas. And that's how it worked then. The other, the only other thing, Terry, that I was going to add from what you mentioned, I think, I think the educate piece was going to be, educate and sharing would be a part of any session that you would do. The other thing that we talked about was looking to rewrite the long-term overarching vision statement. That, that was the other thing. So, yeah, so those, um, so what you, the three iter, the, the three different options that you mentioned were around educate and share and just hear back from the community. Educate, share, and listen for, you know, are these still the goals? Is there anything missing? Or, and then the last one is kind of that, do we need, I think, what I heard you say, and I think what, what we had talked about was, do we need to look altogether at, has the community vision and, and values, have they completely changed? And then that overarching mission statement. And which I think, I think you all had talked about, that hasn't been touched for a really long time. Even longer than, than the goals themselves, so, sorry.
I guess I just want to kind of go back to Jackie, you talking about trying to work backward from a budget, which I get. And, but maybe we just need to stop putting the court, the horse, cart in front of the horse, something like that. And just like go out and listen and then figure out what we're going to do. Because here's the thing, if we go out and listen and it's like, oh, we are way off track, then I guess we're going to just have to figure it out for a year. I mean, I don't know, I, I can't predict what we're going to hear. And maybe we're going to go out and hear, everything's great, or I don't know. But I feel like if we don't authentically go out and listen, we, we, we can't decide a timeline from there.
I was going to say, you're waiting for the right time. Is there ever a right time? And I think I would opt, I'm going to throw it out there just to keep this conversation moving. I would say if we could start when the school, school year starts, like start in the fall. I mean, I, you know, it's, that's quick. I, I, I honor that and I know that because it's the middle of July. And that only gives us a month, but I think if we can just commit to the fall, I, I think that would be a good starting point.
I do think we already have a really good roadmap from the superintendent search. And I don't think that we need to reinvent that wheel too much. I think we can learn from it, of course, but we have already compiled a lot of good, fresh, you know, leads and lists and things that were important to us then. I don't know that that's that much different than what we're looking now. Maybe more, I don't know, I've never been through it. Maybe more parent-focused would be, I guess, my only other thought in thinking about the vision and values. But I, I do feel like we already have a runway that you all worked really hard to build and I thought that went really well. So it sounds really scary, but I just want to remind us all that we have been through this before.
I think you make a good, I, I think, oh yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Terry. Excellent question. I think for me, it's, it's to get started actually, prior to the beginning of the school year, with what I will call a soft rollout. And I, I'm certainly open to receiving any additional input and guidance around who the audience is. But what I'm thinking about, just based on previous experience, thinking about who to leverage and how to sort of galvanize the power of the resources in the community. I would love to start with our faith-based community, right? So different aspects of the faith-based community, probably sometime in August. Maybe two or three touchpoints. And, and then in addition to that, probably even create some small opportunities in different segments of the city to have coffee chats. So those are the two that I'm thinking about. But I also want to be strongly and tightly aligned to the board's sort of planning around getting into the community, right? Don't necessarily want to do too much of these solo to, to start it off. And even with those initial engagements around faith-based community or coffee chats, I want to absolutely invite board members who are available to be part of those conversations. I think there's so much power in that.
around why, why, I think, if there are actual happen, they need to understand that. I think we, we are going to have to be really thoughtful, not only about how, you know, Dr. Roberts' conversation from hours, but also what the end game is. Because people are going to stop telling you there's no specific target, there's no specific end game, or we're not clear about the purpose, or we, we aren't engaged in the community. So I would want to keep that in mind as we begin to think about when we actually go out to do this. Because if we decide that we really are, if we're sincerely interested in giving feedback on goals and potentially introducing a new goal, then I think we have to say that. But just sort of meet people and not having end game in mind, or not having a specific program implementation will be considered. I think really is correct, and if we're going to stop meeting people. So the more clear we can be, the better the better relationship with the community, for the ideas we've been exploring from them. So I'm going to always bring it back to what is it that we want to accomplish with this segment? If we can center ourselves on that, it makes our messaging easier. It also allows us to be specific about what we can put in the community as we're going out to have these conversations.
My sense was that we had a couple of goals. I mean, all of this is informing a goal-setting process, right? Whether it's reaffirmation of existing goals, all of it is on a timeline. So the board has established goals to partner with the superintendent in, on. And so I guess I'm wondering if we can both bring to the community the existing board goals and get feedback on them, update, get feedback on them. But also create some white space so people can just talk about what's on their mind. And this question about, you know, what do we want our kids to know and be able to do? I'd be really interested in hearing that. I mean, I think about AI, I mean, I think, you know, it's like, oh my gosh, the world is so complex right now. I think we need to give some white space. So I just, I don't know that it's black or white. I think it's, let's hear what people think about the board goals. Let's give some rationale, remind people why we picked those and why this matters. And, but at the same time, give people open space, which might inform either a new board goal, a different tact. I think that's the point that Jenna said, which is, we just don't know, so.
If I could push back on that a little bit, the, the only concern I have with that white space is what happens if we don't do anything with it? And I think the community, will they expect us to do something? And if nothing happens, then what? I guess that would just be the only thing, like there has to be an expectation from the board walking into that table. When information is shared, what's that feedback loop? Or what's that response going to be back to the community?
So, and Terry, that's, I hear you completely, you're a hundred percent right, you are. And it goes back to, I think, the stickler of, if we're not going to change our goals, why are we going to the community? Like what are we, what are we going to say? Do you like them, or how do you feel? And then what are we going to do with that information? Is sort of where I think the, the stickler of this whole conversation is. What does a pulse conversation look like? Here's our goals, here's how we're doing. What, what information do we want from them? And how do we see that possibly informing us moving forward? If there's not an entrance, not an interest to make change? Or there's not a timeline to do it until the 25, 26 school year? You know, I mean, I think, are we doing it to check a box? Or are we doing it because we really are willing to make, you know, to make a change and listen? And so I think that, that's, I, I can't see it working honestly either way right now with the timeframe that we have in either scenario. I don't feel like we do our community justice.
So I think one thing that we haven't done the greatest job of is edu, giving basic education to our community about who we are and what we do, what our roles are. So what is the role of a board member? Why is it when you write that email to me, I may shift you over to somebody else? What is it that the superintendent does? Why is it that when you write that email, you might not get directly to the superintendent? And that, that individual might not give you an answer? I really think that we need to go out to the community and educate them on the role. Once they have a, an understanding of that, then you can go back out to the community and start talking about our goals and things like that. But first, I just think for far too long, that piece has been missing. And so when people come to us and they're like, well, what do you do? Or wait, can't you go fix? Or wait, can't you go fix that? Why can't you go into the school building and do this? Like, that piece, I think, has been missing and I think we need to start with educating. I am open to listening, but then I think the question becomes, listening to what? But I do think we need to get out there and educate our community about the roles, because I think that basic piece is lacking.
Well said, I agree. Feel like we're going around in circles.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so, so maybe the community's goal is to determine the purpose for the community. And if we could get them to know that, you know, if it's an opportunity that they can have more goals, development they can have goals, and updating of goals, as a group or sort of to, and with such a one year, going out, maybe doing a more deep, uh, with such a community about new goals. It feels like that could be kind of what's set. Because if we were hard with who we are, how we function, what we, what our current goals are, it doesn't pretty damn hard to go out and start a draft and hear from them, say, okay, we're interested in putting together some goals and we really feel we're not exceeding our work with the community in a way that makes sense. So I would just offer that if we can decide on a purpose for going to the community at some point in the twenty-six or twenty-four year, that they can create sort of a framework for them and go in any subsequent year to do a deeper dive, to me, that could be kind of what's set. And if you have a larger idea of thoughtful about this, that might tease out now, that might help them to explore those topics, those, those subsequent areas that could be the focus and subsequent goals. So I think that could be a way to sort of utilize the opportunity for understanding, not in any white space, the opportunity for understanding, that then comes the thoughtful about how, what's occurred that's bringing for what we did, have the opportunity to begin to think about, that's still a lot of work. So that could be what I would offer as a way to get off the dime. But the thoughtful kind of purpose of this would be how we're going to organize it at some point in time, what's mine for engagement.
That's what I was gonna say, that sounds like a proposal, if we could go with that. I'm, I'm hearing kind of that middle educate, share, and listen type of thing. So where we're still sharing with the community about who we are and what we do, but then we're also listening from them as well, that I think will set us up for the next conversation that we would go out and have with them.
That's what I heard. Is that how the board wants to start planning? And would that be, would that be the committee thinking some of that through?
I just don't want to kick the can down the road, for lack of a better word. I, I don't want to spend a year educating and updating before we're actually going to. Yeah, reflect and listen and I. To, to the point of thinking about the timeline, if, you know, to do this with, with fidelity, to, you know, go out and listen with fidelity, we are not, and, you know, look at the data and potentially create new and/or make adjustments, that the reality is, is that probably won't be done before November. So if we start the process now and.
There's no way it will be done before November.
Okay, so, so maybe, maybe I'm not understanding. What I'm, I wanna, if I may, repeat what I think I heard, is that it would essentially be a phased approach. Starting, once you all have the purpose decided, that phase one is educate, update, and do some listening. It's always, it should be two-way communication. Then that sets the groundwork and that whole, you now have a community, an informed community that you've been working with over the course of FY twenty-four. Trying to cycle through this here. So that in FY twenty-five, you, so that by November of, November twenty-twenty-five, you might, and tell me if my, I'm having trouble. November twenty-twenty-four, you might have, you might have done your. Yes, thank you, you might have done your broader, deeper listening, by which you would determine if there was, there were more goals, different goals, so that they were budgeted for the next year. Is that, is that how you were thinking about it, Teri?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, as we think of the listening, like we talked about wanting to recreate the visions, vision mission. Could that be the listening that we engage in this fall? When we educate, update, listen for the vision? And that could help inform a little bit of what could be anticipatory for future goals?
I think so. I mean, that, that, that's gonna be up to, up to you all, but that, that, and that could tease out the what, you know, twenty years from now, what do you want, or ten years, whatever you want that overarching vision to be. Teri, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Gotcha. I like.
Um, in our, we never, first of all, we have to have a community that's been supplied with, uh, with, that costs, that's a year, that might cost a lot of, a couple of lots of, you know, why, and that. You know, people have to value, calculate, and think, but then also it's sort of that open opportunity, open mind as well for people who share other opportunities that they're forced, that they're just able to, you know, that's what I'm hoping. And I'm happy that there's been a lot more, people can react to that, it's been more opportunity.
I would be open to that.
I'm shaking my head yes.
I'm also open to that. Yeah, I think, why don't you just give us something to start with? I think, I, I think that if, it's a moving point at this point in time, gets us out, gets us listening.
I think that's a good way of. No, I was just gonna say, I think that's a good way of moving the needle. Jackie?
I, I'm trying to reconcile how our customers feel and the community feels, which the, kind of the erosion of public education, declining enrollment, kids working through a lot of challenges, there are urgent and pressing things. And so I think, and obviously, not all of that is in our span of control. I'm just trying to reconcile a feeling of urgency from our community to provide the best public education we can and the conversation we're having. So I, I think I'll just look at what Teri has, but there's just a dissonance for me on this conversation and what our community is feeling.
I just wanna be mindful that when we say community, who are we talking about when we make those statements? And, and the urgency, who is saying that that urgency is there? So I just wanna be mindful, when we say those things, who are we talking about? And what does that mean? So sometimes we need to be mindful of that. But I'm looking forward to seeing what Teri has, but we've gotta be mindful of what community are we talking about?
Well, I do think it is worth noting thirty thousand IONs applied for school vouchers. So I mean, there are a lot of people that are looking for options. I don't know how many of them are here in DMPS, but I think it's worth noting that I, I hear what, I hear both sides, but.
Yeah, I'm not discrediting anything, but I just wanna.
Point of mass exodus of public education.
Yeah, I'm not discrediting any of that, I just think we need to be mindful when we use those terms, community. Because community looks different for me than it could look for other people, so I think we need to be mindful of that.
Well, I think the other thing, people think that, you know, you can own control, but you can't control. And it's certain times you do control our own board, to tell our own board, I think it's about, it's really hard to, it's very difficult to be honest. So I'm, I'm, I'm looking at this, you know, as the last half decade. I think we have to look at this at the last half full. And why do we have to be so strict? And why do people have to talk to each other, they are, in a way that helps to elevate not only our board, but also our community? So, you know, I, I, I'm not, because I'm more clear about that now. Because I, I'm, I'm, you know, there are a few different set of factors. There's life, there's the outstanding of the district, what we do in the district. And other communities, they, uh, they're, they're, they're set off to take their path. So I'm really thoughtful, as you know, thinking about going in the community, um, our past as the experience of this, that has to be born, that if you don't learn, you don't know what you're going to learn. So I'm, I'm, well, I don't know, I don't know why, but I think we have to, we have to, sort of a phased approach to this, but I'm also curious to think about our own board. And I'm trying to, it's a different situation, but I'm, I'm, I'm. Yeah, I'm, I'm, we're really used to this with our young. And we can believe in one community, five communities, I think, to be concerned. So I'm not, I'm not, it's not, it's not, we admire that, but we always have to, we're not, we, we cannot afford to, you know, to, to argue with that. But others, we're not, we're not, we're not.
It's a fair point, and actually, maybe as we think about our phased approach, how do we use, whether it's the marketing and branding effort, or how do we use part of this to actually be cheerleaders for our district? In how we tell stories or how we show up? So I appreciate the reminder, Teri.
All right, so, um, Teri, and I'm happy to help you. We'll create a draft phased approach to engagement and present that to the board in our next, in our next update to the board. And any final thoughts, questions?
I just have a question, at what point does the staff get the opportunity to provide input? For the superintendent on, I mean, their, just their opinion, their thoughts on?
The staff is, they are all, well, I will speak to the staff and their participation in the superintendent search engagement and outreach.
No, 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 I meant in the, specifically the board goals, just if they have, if they have thoughts, if they, yeah.
If I can finish, they are a part of our community, they are invited along with everyone else to participate. And we're over forty percent of our respondents in the superintendent search. So they're very much a part of our interaction of engagement and outreach, or have been in the past. And I wouldn't see that being any different moving forward as we listen for the community's vision and values.
Yeah, I just meant specific to, as we're thinking about this conversation, if anybody in leadership had a professional opinion that they wanted to share, separate from listening sessions. So, it's fine, we can move on.
Anyone?
And I would offer, I can help support your phased approach document as well if you need. So don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night, everyone, buenos dias. Good to hear you, Ms. Teri. I know.